Good evening. Let's get started. Al is not going to be here tonight. He's still, I don't know if this is working.
This is on?
Yours is.
Hello, hello. Yes, this is working. Testing, that's on.
I can't figure that out.
Rowdy people.
I'm gonna need this.
Crazy crowd.
That sounds better. Okay, so Al is not gonna be here. He's recovering from the surgery. Liz is not gonna be here. She had some family letters come up this afternoon. And it's looking to me like Marla is not gonna be here. She had warned me that her dog is sick and her husband is at deer camp. So she told me this morning that she might not make it. So I think we have a fairly straightforward agenda. Maybe we can make it our way through it. A pace, but we shall see. I would like to add an item to the consent agenda. Lauren has sent us a letter for a request for leave from...
Mulligan.
Mulligan. So I would like to add that to the consent agenda. Does anybody else have anything that needs to be added to the agenda? Okay. It's my expectation that we do not meet executive session tonight. Kim will give us a brief update on support staff negotiations, but it won't require executive session. Okay, so any comments from the public? Nope. Okay. Then let's move on to the consent agenda since Marla isn't here. I'll entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda consisting of meeting minutes from November 7, a request for leave and the approval of warrants.
Motion made.
Okay. I forgot to ask if anything needed to be pulled. Okay. All votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. Beth, you wanna talk about your first hundred days?
Sure. So I did print out, and they're small, but it's more, so for your notes. And a huge apology for sending you a first draft of a reflection. I don't know what happened to my computer and it automatically, it doesn't ask for the update like most computers. I was glad that Martha sent me something saying, her email made me look at it and read it and I thought, hmm, now what happens? So, and that's what happened. And then I was not near my computer to send it to you until later. But I apologize. It was getting everything down on the paper and then time to go back. And that's what I was supposed to do last Friday when I got with my mom. So, the first hundred days, this is also an overview and the reflection definitely has more, but you're welcome to ask questions along the way. So the first, one of the outcomes was understanding the current state of the transitional phase of the district. So ways that I have done that, Voices for Education has been a huge asset for me to learn about where the community feels about the school, getting to know people. It's been a real benefit for me to be a part of that because I've had access to students. And I actually was interviewed by a student today at Essex High School. We met at the Nest and it was about career and college choices and why did I become a superintendent? And it's only because of Voices for Education that she felt like she could just email me and say, can I interview you? So that's huge. I feel like I've had more interactions with students than I did in my previous district, or them coming up to me without me trying to approach them. But I also talked to her about in how could I get into the school to have conversations with students? And she had some great suggestions, so that was great. And that will help me to understand too, like where the students are with the transition of one district and it might not even be affecting them at all. I do know that the conversation that I had with her today was that she feels like the school and the district are really focused on the future for students and that's a great feeling, but that's what she's getting from the Voices for Education, which is really neat. She also told me that I wasn't a normal superintendent.
Did you say thank you?
And I said, can you tell me more about that? And she said, well, they spend a lot of time on policy. And I said, well, I have to also. And she said, but you have the focus on us. I was like, oh. Anyway, so that was awesome. The other huge piece of learning about where we're at is really listening and learning from the administrators, the directors at the district office, and the leadership team. And teachers as well, but I think that that is a huge piece of how I've gotten to know where we are in the transition. And really working with the directors on the operational side and the instructional side on how to make decisions and then when we make those decisions, who does that impact? And having those conversations and really talking about the why we're making decisions when something's done to really, Brian's been working really hard with the operational side too, in explaining things and going to people instead of just having the decision be made through an email, but really going and talking to people. And I think that that's been huge and helpful, I've noticed, since the beginning of school when I realized that we weren't talking a lot, that we have to get, here are people's business. And so that's been a, that's been great to be able to do that work. The need for single systems as we develop into one, and I understand why there've been different systems and it's hard to bring it all to one, but really it's, I think it's been good to have a few because people have gotten restless with that or now they're ready to say, okay, we just need one. I don't, we don't care what it is. So people are at that point. So that's good too. And especially with like our student data system warehouse, we're really, we've looked up, Amy has done a great job bringing different ones to us, but we're narrowing in on one that, that the regional, like the Chittenden County area is looking out for a data warehouse. So we're hoping to jump on with that one too and then we could, even when we have kids that come from different districts, the data would be in there, which would be, it costs no more than the three different systems we have now, so if we put them all together, I think it's a little cheaper actually. And the biggest thing I think with getting to know where, where we are in the, in the transition is time. We just, it's going to take time. And I, I think I said this in the beginning, it was like a magic wand was gonna happen on July 1 and everything was gonna be done. So still respecting that of time and it's moving probably slower than some like, and I'm that north, we did that compass, all of us. I'm north, so sometimes I don't have the patience to wait for that, but I need to, I need to work on that. And with policies and procedures and where we're at, we did a lot of work, actually that conversation that we were having there in that picture was about policies needed to, especially we had that handbook coming out, so we had policies that needed to get in that and make them common and procedures, those guiding procedures. And we'll be working with the committee soon to do more. That teacher evaluation system is really key also in a new district, but that's one of the ones that we just have to slow down and wait until we really have the vision aligned with student outcomes and then we can work on a teacher evaluation system, one collaboratively that will be based on growth. And we've had those conversations, we just haven't done that work yet. We have new signs, I don't know if you've noticed.
It's so exciting.
It's official. I was stopping taking pictures, well, that was today, of our signs. I didn't get, I walked into the west office, didn't come back out to make a, well, I came back out, but didn't take a picture. So the next thing, I think I shared this dinner table with you. I was having troubles trying to figure out like what are the different teams? And there's so many and everybody wants to be at the table all the time and really to develop that trust amongst the different teams and the directors to know that when they're not at the table, decisions aren't going to be made that impact the work they do, that they just have to trust that that's happening. And when decisions are being made that they need to be a part of, they will be at the table. But I think they were nervous and still some are about decisions being made without having input. I, hopefully they're learning and trusting me that that's not who I am to do that. So that's been really important to figure out who's coming to the meetings and working out a schedule. So what we ended up, Brian and I worked on, we wanted to really look at the leadership team and focus with the principals being the most important people to move our schools forward. And how do we support them with all the directors and administrators around? So they're the ones that work with their school staff and their teachers that most affect the students, so then it's how do we support them? And these groups, all these different boxes had different meetings all the time, weekly. I think if we didn't change this, that's all I would do, would be to go to meetings. So I worked with the principals about what their need was and they really, we decided that we needed to get focused, so when they came to a meeting, we'd know like the topic that it would be. Agendas go out ahead of time, they're very focused meeting, very engaging. The first meeting is the instructional, which I shared with you before. They really valued their grade level team meetings that they started last spring, so we wanted to continue that and honor their time and give, and set a time for them to do that instead of them trying to meet before school for breakfast or after or whatever, that we really would, we'd take a time apart so that they could individually or take time out of a leadership schedule, that they were used to meeting every week. And then the one, the third week is the operations focus, which Brian facilitates. We, I facilitate the instructional one, but we create the agendas together. But that's right now the facilitating. We would love for others to take over once we're more of a collaborative group and they'll just jump in and facilitate. And then the fourth one, we use really as in case we need an extra time. This, in November, we are really into reading Equity book, can't even think of it, but it's on here. And so they decided that, hey, let's use that flexible date to come back together to do, to talk about the book again, which was awesome. So they wanted to meet them. And then with each meeting, whether it's instructional or operational, when the agenda comes out, the directors look at that and know if they're, if there's something on HR, then Deb will come. If there's something with policies or procedures, Paul will come. So they look at that to determine whether they need to be there. And they're always welcome and I, we say that all the time, they can come at any time they want to, but that's a time that, that's their choice. So it has focused the meetings because there's a purpose behind them. And when you have the like groups together, so if you look at this side, the instructional groups and the operational, the directors, they would always meet together even if it really didn't pertain to them. So I just felt like, like Vince, he's extremely busy to come to a meeting that doesn't have anything to do with technology, even though it's nice to have him there, we'd love to have him there, but it's, is it really necessary to be at every meeting happening? So, and that's been a huge change. And again, it's the trust that no decisions are gonna be made if they're not at the table. So, do you have any questions about the different types of meeting or what we're doing in the leadership team or directors?
I just, I, just one question, just because you happened to mention Vince and I think it totally makes sense that agendas are targeted and efficient for people. I would imagine, when Ellen and Vince, when they're thinking about the things they're putting in kids' hands to achieve the educational purpose, that they're doing plenty of collaboration. And that would not necessarily need to be in a whole big group.
No, and we have talked about bringing Vince, so the instructional team, we're looking at like a learning management system and that to have him come to the table at that time too. Right now, we're working around a data system for that warehouse and we thought, oh, we really should bring him in the next time, so let's stop our conversation until he's off the table. So those are the kind of things that, I think the more they hear me say, okay, let's stop until we have everybody here the next time together. So, here's a quote from an administrator that wrote me a letter to pass on to Martha and she reminded me, oh, you're gonna share that? So I did email it to you, but I'll let you read the quote. So that, with the principal PLC and the instructional focus, we're reading Building Equity, that's the name of the book, which has really given us a great, I mean, it's great to read a book together anyways and then you start your common language and all of that, but, and it brings in so much more of the things that we should be doing and we know we need to be doing or things we are doing and they're, they're saying, oh, those are great. So we've been able to do both through reading this book and we know we have a lot of work to do around equity, but it's really giving us a focus, excited, look, I picked another meeting to come, to read and then come back to it. So it's been, it's been great work. But I think we're able to really get down to talking about instruction and education, which we should be as a leadership team meeting, as a group, because we defined what that day is. And when they come, they're ready, they're ready and prepared to talk about it and what we set aside that time and they know that that's their sacred time to talk about kids, instruction, what's happening in the schools. Well, the other one was to establish a presence in the community for myself as I get to learn about the district in the first hundred days. As you know, I enjoyed Rotary. I try to get there a couple times a month. I always sit with a different group of people, so I get to know them and then I can, they have great questions about the new district. It is, it's been, it's been really, I really have enjoyed that. And even ways to get helping in the community and volunteering, I can't wait to get over here full time so I can do more of that. And I'll get my husband involved volunteering. He can do the running around for the day that they always need. I can't do those. I'll volunteer him. I've tried to attend sporting events and number one reason is to support kids, but also I get to meet parents and community members. I went to the performance recently and that was amazing. I happened to sit right behind Martha, that was not planned. It was amazing. It was absolutely amazing. It brought tears and chills watching kids perform, just incredible. And again, the Voices for Education has really gotten me out in the community. I met with Sue Mark Cormack today and I can't remember his name, he's a pastor in town, Dan. Anyways, he handed me his business card and I was like, I wanna be your neighbor. So then we talked about that and talked time to set up for him to talk about Nepal and what values they have and that would be really important in the work that we're doing. So that was perfect. And both Sue and I thought we had a reason to be at the Nest for that to happen. So involving myself in the community has been really a benefit. It's been, I keep telling people, it's the most welcoming community that I've, that I've ever really been in. It's amazing. The students, the staff, the teachers, the community members, I mean, going to the play, it's just, it's amazing. That's awesome. Should be very proud of the community you live in and I can say that too, Sue, in a few weeks. So the other piece was to increase communication with the district and the Essex Westford, within the district and the Essex Westford community. One thing that I made a goal for myself was to start really tweeting out things that I'm doing and being involved in the community and when I go places. So those are just some tweets. But I also wanted to do a superintendent's blog. I do not have time to do it. I really have to put it on my calendar and just say like, right time, because I can't seem to do it. Maybe when I move over here, I'll be, I'm fine. So, that's definitely important. We did establish Essex Westford School District Weekly and that's been great. It's written, we all have a place. I did, I think the links work now in the reflection and then you can just see just kinda how it's set up. And then if we have something to report, we report it. If we don't, it's not a thing that has to go out. I did send a Happy Thanksgiving, or I think my subject was called gratitude, to everybody and the staff and I've received amazing thank yous back and that was really nice. I've had people say in 38 years I haven't received an email like this, so that was nice. So the more communication and I, it's always on my brain to do that and working with Ben is just amazing. He's phenomenal. And just having a position like that for a district is incredible. I felt really lucky to have that. To ensure effective board leadership that serves all students, EWSD, and impacts student achievement. So that is from your retreat and working on your focus area, oh, that one was working on your compass.
Yes.
Yeah. But I think the value of you working together on, in that August day and then creating a work plan has really helped me in figuring out where to go. It'll be wonderful when we have outcomes, that'll be better, but just having that work plan and being able to meet with Martha and Kim every other week to plan these meetings, it's so helpful. When I was talking to the student today, she said, what's different between my last job and this job? I said, 10 board members and two board meetings. I had 24 board meetings and six boards, members and six boards. And I, and I really, when I was talking to her and I was like, I really felt like that's all I did was prepare for board meetings and meet with board chairs, which was great, but it's not really the work that a superintendent needs to be doing. So even though that, this district is larger, I don't feel as I'm, if I'm like running around for board members all the time, just a little, which is awesome. And you're so great to work with. So modeling effective leadership by offering hope, compassion, trust, and stability. There was a Gallup survey done and these are the top four or five areas that came out for true leadership and this is what people look at in a leader. And I have shared this since I learned this. I probably learned it maybe four years ago and it has really become a part of what I think about a lot. I need to, and I, when I was putting this together, I thought, I haven't done it yet. I used to have it at the bottom of my email, these five words. And I also share them with teachers too, because I, I believe that this is what we need to show students too. But they say, if you are a leader this way, people will follow and, and move. So part of the, the respect, integrity, community, and relationships that wordle was from the value work that we did as a staff in September on a half-day early release. And that's their shared values. That is, Brian and I do not like that picture, neither does he, but it was, the purpose of that one was to, when we did the opening kickoff, Brian and I made sure that we were outside saying hello to people and that meant a lot to us, that we were welcoming people into that day. And the leadership team joined us, which was awesome. Just that whole morning of being really active and a lot of people to meet, that was a great way to begin building the hope, the compassion, and the trust. The value work that we did with the leadership team, I think was really important for me. It was a great way to get to know them and where, what's important to them. So now we have our shared values and even when we talk in our leadership team meetings, those values, we rely on those and we come back to them a lot, even though they're not the district-wide ones yet, but they're what we had talked about believing in. And then we're reading that, Building Equity, which is part of our value work, which has been great. We've only discussed two chapters, but it's really, I've actually wondered, as I'm reading that, I keep thinking the board, you would love that book.
Yes, you do. Book, read.
And then through the Building Equity, one of our Hiawatha, Principal Hiawatha, Catherine, took a chapter, and it's legal, to copy one chapter and share. So she did a chapter with her teachers, her whole staff, and her admin assistant then puts that, "All are welcome." I received that picture today and it's all welcome in all the different languages. And that is one of the very first things that you read in the book, is just welcoming everybody into your system. So she asked Catherine if she could do that. Catherine's like, of course. And then sent me the picture and I said, we'll use this tonight. It fits perfectly with what we're doing. So by leading in this way, it is spreading and people are having those conversations too, which is great. That's that value work that I valued so much with them and the great conversations. And those were the beginning of the conversations. I think of how far we have come since that day and it hasn't even been that long, but the things that we can talk about now because we have shared common values. Here's my personal life. So continue the professional growth and personal health and wellbeing, which has been difficult being on the road all the time, living out of my car. My husband opened the trunk the other day for something and I was like, don't even say a word. My cooler's in there, I had shoes, it's just like, I'm living out of my car. So I did take some time and get down to Mississippi. My son in the pink sweater, it was breast cancer awareness day at a golf course and it was a professional golf tournament that we went down to see and that was awesome. His home now drove from Mississippi, this is a picture I received last night of he and my daughter at the diner, my husband. During the time in Mississippi, Dave and I were able to pop over to New Orleans for a couple nights. It was awesome. That balance between work and family is so important and always trying to help others to find that balance also and talk to the principals about every time I meet with them is about, how you, so how you doing on your, in your personal life too, because that, you do need that balance. The football game is, my son has a, it's kind of in the middle of the picture, he is a coach of a varsity, he's an assistant coach of a varsity football team in Arlington Catholic. So that was one of my goals, to get down to a game this year and we did it. And then I am so thankful I am in Vermont and not in New Orleans where it's drug, the drug-free, gun-free school zone. That was right outside, where our Airbnb was and the school was down the road. And I said to Dave, doesn't it figure that we picked, I picked an Airbnb right in the neighborhood of a school? But I'm so thankful. I took a lot of pictures like that around of, kinda like really Equity pictures. I took a picture of a park bench that was divided, like there were seats and they were divisions where people could sit and I thought, why do they have those? Like you're separating people and you know, we do things and we make things without thinking about, I don't even think, I don't even think a handicap person could access, it was just a weird bench, so I took a picture of that. I took a picture of the goddess of immigrants that's in New Orleans and it's, so I had Equity on my mind and I just kept taking pictures, it was kinda cool. That's one thing that I constantly, never stop, my brain doesn't stop without work. But, so and professionally, I really value the regional superintendent meetings. I knew the superintendents that were over here before anyways, but just being in their group and meeting once a month is so valuable and staying current with Vermont educational issues that way and then becoming actively involved in the superintendent's, the Vermont superintendent's meetings also. Going to the SBA and the Vermont Principalship Academy, just learning with others is, is just a great experience to, and getting to know people outside of either board meeting or also just outside of school and to get to know people. So professionally, I continue to strive. I did tell the student today, she said, so where are you going in your next steps? I was like, next step? Wow. And I said, I do want my doctor. And she goes, wow, you're so ambitious. I wanna write a book too. How do you do all that? You have to keep dreaming. Any questions? I have to take all this information and then create some goals and where we're gonna go, so I've spent my time listening and learning and now it's, yes.
I actually have a random detail question. You mentioned the early release day. And I was wondering how that went, because somebody told me that like it ended up not happening for the town because of bus issues or something?
No, that was a parent conference, that was on- No, that was, um, a parent conference, though, because on, it was very confusing, the way the calendar was written. Um, so it was confusing to Brian and I, and we discussed it with the principal. So that was the one, but the early release day in September, no, everybody had that.
And that went well?
It went well. They, everybody went to different schools, and we had them in groups of K to twelve. Um, actually, there were some pre-K too. And then, um, and support staff, we put them all in groups. And, um, each of the schools hosted, or some of the schools hosted the large groups. And then the principals were in charge of getting the directions to people, but we have packets ready to go. It was a ton of work to do, and we kept saying, why are we doing this instead of having everybody together? Um, but the, we couldn't all fit here, because kids were in sports and things, so the cars couldn't have fit all in one place. When we decided we wanted all, we always say, what does all mean? So we wanted support staff too. If we just went with teachers, we could've done it at the high school, but we wanted support staff. Um, and so, yeah, dividing up to schools. It took longer than we thought for people to get to the designated schools. But it went well. Some folks finished up earlier, and the timing of getting that wordle together was a little, but we just had to be flexible. You have to be flexible in education. Yeah, it was kinda cool.
So, I'm curious, um, a- after, after your first hundred days, what was, um, something that was, that you didn't anticipate? That you came across in your first one hundred days and was sort of surprising to you?
I think the whole, um, well, putting two systems together that were very different, I think, in the way, um, yeah, and trying to find, it's like they were different on, and not in either, I mean, they were both great systems, but they were on either end of the spectrum. So to try to come together in the middle so that you're taking the best of both, that's been more difficult. I didn't know they were so different. In such good ways, but.
Right.
Um, yeah, so I think, I'm one that loves change, and I have to often remind myself that not everybody does love change. And I think about the opportunities in change, and I have to remind people of that too. I think the, one of the best things is that I am new, and so I don't bring a past, and I just won't accept that's the way it's been done. Like, we can't. But that's easy for me to do, because I don't have a past. When I can bring in other things and other ways to look at, or other ways districts do, plus the two districts or the two systems that were, and then I can bring in others, or this is the way that I've seen it done, or, um, so I think that's been really helpful. And I think it's been, um, amazing that Brian was here and is back. Um, and he brings in that attitude too, so. We're not stuck, because you can be.
Um, given the first hundred days and starting in a system, um, that's new, in coming from your old system, um, is there anything that struck as immediacy for change?
Um, I mean, the thing that I wished that happened was that everything was able to go as planned with the finance and the HR getting into Tyler. And it just seemed like an overwhelming task to be able to do and get ready by that August first paycheck. I mean, there was just so many things that went into it that I don't think anybody anticipated. And so, part of the trainings were happening for Tyler during the spring. I've been in Tyler trainings. They're difficult. Um, and so there wasn't enough time to be trained and do the work that needed to be done in the spring to close out the two systems.
Okay.
And get one going.
Sure.
I think I told the State Board of Education, I wish we had like a gap year. You know, like, we don't, it's hard to do all at once, while you're running one and getting one up. I still feel like this whole year will be transitioned, and even into next year's going to be a transition. So, and I wonder, you know, for other districts merging, do you, and it sounds crazy, but do you hire a superintendent and still run two systems as you merge into one? To, so that you are making decisions that are forward instead of people saying, well, wait till the new superintendent is here. You know?
Good question.
Yeah.
Well, we're pretty different exactly because most of the directors are within an S U.
Right.
So it is the superintendent.
Right.
It's just districts within that S U becoming a single district. So I think we're, and not.
True.
Though it seems like we could be less so, as they're looking at what's left to merge. It does seem as though there will be merging of, of SUs or fractions of SUs into a single, um, central office. So it's, it seems we may be down to a place where they'll be learning from our experiences.
It'd be true. Bretonton.
So given the fact that you arrived in the midst of a negotiations process, I wonder what your impression is of labor relations in the district? And, um, how that may or may not have affected your first one hundred days?
I think it was amazing that I didn't have to jump in and try to figure out where people were at, that Paul was able to step in and continue from where Judy had left off. I think that that was really helpful. It also kept me out of that, um, even though it was done in such a collaborative way, that I was getting to know the staff, the teachers, without sitting at a table for our first-time meeting. So I think that was helpful in that way that was designed, and I thank everybody that thought of that ahead of time. Um, it is interesting to, which you do whenever you're new to a system as a superintendent. You're following the contract that was created without your input. Um, so there's some things that I think, oh, well, that's different. And I constantly am relying on it and thinking about it, because that's, that's our guide. Um, yeah, I, it's easier to be a part of that contract and those discussions, so you fully understand it. Like, I still ask questions like, why is that? Why does it say this? Can you explain this? I'm, I go devil out. But, yeah, it's helpful when you're part of it. So next time will be great.
Tech, then.
Um, you, you had the charts dealing with the leadership team and whatnot?
Yeah.
Um, I didn't see any notation for the pre-K component that we have now. Um, how are they, uh, in the loop?
So Erin McGuire oversees that, and she's in that leadership piece. And, um, so they are through her.
Okay.
And then the ones that are in the school have the principal there. Um, but, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, full question. I was, actually, when we were looking at the sort of org chart of meetings, um, a question I had was, are there, are there ways, um, are there built-in ways or reasons for you to interact with faculty on a regular basis? Or do you have to kind of, um, figure out a way to make time for those connections?
Yeah, I figure out a way to make time for those connections. So during, um, like Monday, I was able to pop into different in services and interact that way. I went to the, um, Amy Cole was leading the proficiency work with the indicators. So that was a great opportunity for me to sit down at a table and have discussions and, um, add to their discussions about indicators. That was really helpful. I do wanna start, once budget season is done, and then really start to get into faculty meetings. I think that that's, some principals have asked me for their, um, they wanna start facilitating meetings differently. And have asked for my help in that. So the only way that I can see if they're doing that, or help them, is to go to the meetings, which is perfect. Because I would like to do that. Um, the leadership team here, I've been to a couple of their meetings, and I'd like to continue. And it's, still, it's in that learning phase and listening and figuring out how they're run. And, um, but I do end up meeting a lot of faculty when I'm in the schools. Um, meeting with principals, we'll do walkthroughs. There's a couple of principals that, um, actually three, that now wanna work on feedback to teachers, so that, I will get in classrooms, because they're gonna, um, that's part of, uh, training that I used to do. So I will work with them, and we'll go into, they're called learning observations. We can't really evaluate, because I'm a superintendent. Um, so that's had to be really clear too with staff, so the principals have to talk to them about that. Um, so I will be doing that soon, and that'll be a great way to get in, to see, teaching kids, um, and get to know them. So it's hard to meet so many and keep them all in my head.
Of course, yeah.
The faces, I'm like, oh, I met you, uh, such and such, but the names are.
Right, and I assume the principals are your direct connect.
They are.
But, you, it's, I think there's, nothing beats, I think, an interaction that a superintendent can have with teachers.
Absolutely.
Even in a casual way.
I absolutely agree, and I try to do that as much as I can. And it is through the principals, and the more that, you know, more than a hundred days, maybe I'll meet some more.
Okay, I would like to wrap this up. Are there any questions or comments? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
This was informative. Your written report was very helpful.
The second one.
The second one. I could read the first one, but it was like, Keely's gonna go.
Yeah, that was a, I gotta figure out that computer.
Okay, so let's move on to school board business. And this is an appropriate time to talk about the superintendent formative evaluation process. So, um, Beth has helped me by creating, um, a Google form that we will use to do the evaluation. Um, do you wanna scroll down?
Yeah.
So you will look at the standards. You will have a dropdown menu to pick your overall evaluation of the category. And then, as we talked about last time, if there are areas in the standards in particular that are better or worse, that the category you picked, I think making a comment about them would make sense, as well as making gentle comments. I think the comments are probably the most important feedback. Um, you know, you need to have some quantifiable feedback as well. But, um, I always find the comments to be the part that the superintendent can learn from. Keely.
And just on that first category that talks a lot about continuous improvement plan, we should just imagine those words aren't there, because the continuous improvement plan is still being built.
Being built. So I think you just think about the fact that it is being built. And that's the place that we're at with that.
Is this, is this designed to be anonymous, or will our answers be connected to us?
It's anonymous. And once I send you the link, I'm gonna make Martha the owner, so I don't see any of it. She'll get all the results. But we won't have, um, I did not ask it to collect emails. Do you want it to? I mean, I can put it back. That's up to you.
Well, I guess I just, you know, in the spirit of, um, trust, I mean, so there's two ways about it, right?
Like, anonymous means that people can just have at it. But, I guess. I, I don't know, I guess, I feel like, um, and maybe this is more subliminal than anything. I feel like if, if we have to be accountable for our responses and have to be accountable for our feedback to you, I think that's a better position than to have an, an opportunity to provide anonymous feedback. I think that, I guess my, my, my thought is that each of us should be accountable for our own feedback and have an environment where, where we can trust that that feedback will be, will be received in a, in, in the way that it's meant to be received, right? As constructive criticism or constructive feedback. I think if we had concerns that sort of require anonymity, we would go to our chair.
I hope so.
Um, so I, I guess, for what it's worth, I, I, I don't think it's a make or break thing. I'm just saying that, I guess, my hope would be that we would be able to develop a culture as a board where we feel safe and trusted to, um, to provide honest, uh, and constructive feedback and to own it.
So who, who, let me, let me talk a little bit about how I envision us perceiving. And then we can decide. Um, but it would be my thought that I would collate the responses. And then, uh, our next meeting, we would go through the comments and either say, this is a reasonable comment and we agree, or this is an outlier and we're not going to include it in the evaluation. Does that sound right to everyone? Is that how you think it should be done? So, um, so I can look at it both ways.
Uh, it helps to understand what the, what you're, what you're thinking in terms of the process. I'll still sign all my comments with.
So let's leave it up to personal preference.
Just to follow up on that, so the end result is an evaluation which forms part of Beth's employment record, essentially. Is it also a part of public information?
No.
No, it would, no.
It's personal.
Because then it would seem that outliers.
This is the only thing that right now is public.
I don't care about anonymous, non-anonymous. I would prefer to avoid anonymous. Like, the evaluation survey we did last year, where our names were, and then all of our answers were always in the same order. So mine was always the third one. The choices were randomized. You had to choose between like bad, good, sort of bad, sort of good.
Do we have it sort of anonymous?
So, so the goal is to reach agreement on the evaluations that we all feel comfortable about. And then I'll share it with Beth, and she'll have an opportunity, um, if she wishes, to rebut anything that's been there, that she doesn't agree with.
So, just, just so I'm clear, so we'll have a discussion as a board about the responses? So we'll be able to, if there is an outlier, um, we can have an opportunity to sort of explore that?
You said, yeah.
So there's four standards, and each of the standards, you pick the proficiency level, which, remember, it's different reading here.
Yeah.
Um, and then there's a place for comments, feedback and comments about that standard. And then at the very end, other comments. I probably should've done this on the other section. But this one, you can do a whole, how many comments you want. It will just expand to how, whatever you want. But that's other, besides the four standards. You know what I mean?
Outside of the.
Outside, got it.
Urgent comments or something that didn't.
Or your name.
There we go. It's only.
And then you just click submit, and Martha will get the results.
Cool.
So I was, I would like to get this done. I am a little concerned, because our December fifth meeting looks like it's gonna be loaded. Um, but it, it will be my goal to have a discussion that night. If we can't, we'll put it off. Um, you know, if it's ten o'clock at night, I'm not gonna start the discussion.
I rather you didn't. I got a good time.
Load up on sugar.
Let's keep going.
Do you think that you could all get your responses done by, hey, um, Saturday, hey, December second, or the end of the day of Friday, the first?
When will that be sent?
I think it'll be sent.
Tonight or tomorrow morning?
Tomorrow.
Okay. Good with that?
Is that, okay. Uh, great. And I'll send an email tonight to the three board members who aren't here and explain that to them.
A very important message on it?
Pardon?
Can you put a very important prompt on it?
Oh, on the.
On the message coming to us?
On the message coming to us?
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you.
Priority, important?
Yes.
Okay. At our last meeting, we had a student who attended and talked about an interest that students have in perhaps having a voice at this table. Kim and I have talked, and I've spoken a bit with Liz. It was my general sense that the board would be interested in exploring what that might look like. If that's not the case, be cut. Yes.
I have some questions about it. I guess, first of all, by law, this student would be simply an observer, right, not participating in actual decision-making of the board?
So what, what I would like to do is to establish a subcommittee. Kim and I and Liz are interested in serving. We'd be happy to be joined by anybody else. What we'd like to do is research. I think different boards use students in different ways. On some boards, they do vote, but they vote on certain types of items. They usually aren't included in executive session, and lots of executive sessions they could not be included in. So what we would like to do is explore what the models are and then bring those back to this board for discussion about if we're gonna go forward, what's the model that we think would work best. But if the board is totally opposed to having a student at the table, we shouldn't invest that time. But if the board is comfortable with exploring that possibility, I'd like to move forward with the subcommittee and then come back with what the options look like.
And just the other component would be, I'd also like to understand how the student becomes the student at the table?
Yeah.
Because my experiences of how student government representation was elected was not that it gave me a voice in any way in my school. So.
Well, again, I think I have some of my own ideas about that, but I think we should.
And if we're randomly adding people to the board, why not add two students, or one student from each town, or, you know, so.
Right. So let us, let us explore some options. The state board has two student members. One's a junior and one's a senior. And the juniors stay for their senior year, so they serve for two years. And they participate in so, and so, but there are other school districts that use students. So what we'd like to do is research the models and bring back the possibilities for discussion.
By what we're allowed to do with our laws.
Yeah, exactly. By the other models being used out there. There's some resources through the V S B A and talking to the students and the board chairs from districts that have them at the table. And then one of the other things that I thought about in terms of voting or not voting, I think my, my personal interest in, in that, in having a student join us at the table is to make sure we're considering student impact on the things that we're talking about in a way that's authentic by their experience. But I think about our votes in general, and they are rarely split, you know, five-four. So whether a person is an active vote at the table, or the discussion is informed by there being a student voice at the table, the actual vote, I think we'll, we'll explore the law and, and whether it's a voting member and other models that exist. But that piece doesn't feel like an obstruction to moving forward with it, but I think there's so many other questions, and you've raised a couple of good ones, that I think we probably all will have, and I think that's what Martha and I thought for sure, that we just, we wanted to make sure the sentiment was that we are at least interested in pursuing additional information for us all to consider, but we knew for sure we were not in a place to know enough to be able to decide as a board what we would do and how we would do it. Does that make sense?
And the students who are interested in this have been reaching out to their peers in other districts and learning about models as well. So we'll probably, as we would as a subcommittee, meet with them as well to understand what they've learned. And also to understand what their goals might be, because it's possible that what they're really looking for can't be, isn't gonna happen at the board table. Maybe it's something else within the school. Or maybe it's both. So I think that's, needs to be explored as well. Brendan, sorry.
That's fine. So I think one, so I think that we should recognize that it would be very difficult for any one of us to be against a student participating in, in the board in some way, shape, or form, I think. But I think that, I guess what I would ask the subcommittee to do in addition, sort of understanding what the law allows and doesn't allow, understanding what models might work or not work. I think the other thing that the subcommittee should really spend some time thinking about is a framing question of for the sake of what?
Right.
So for the sake of what would we ask or have a student participate in the board? I think a deliberate discussion about that can help frame all the other details, because all the other stuff is just details. We can figure out a way for it to happen, but I think we all need to agree on that larger question of what are we trying to get out of having a student participate in these, in these meetings? Yeah. So I think, anyway, I just, I would just encourage that to be sort of the framing question that the subcommittee starts with, as opposed to jumping right into the technical details of how would it all work?
Okay. So are we comfortable with doing an exploration?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So, and if anyone else is interested in the subcommittee, let me know. But it will for sure be with this, Kim and me. Okay, great. So testing updates, communications, Patrick?
Yes. So we had our first communications meeting in a while last week, so Liz, Ben, and I sat down. We talked and we wanted to stress the Voices for Education meeting coming up on the 28th. And we're also starting to consider in the bigger picture, because our Voices for Education grant only lasts for one more year. And up until this point, realistically, that's been kind of our primary community feedback, you know, it's how we've been going out into the community, getting the words, getting the interactions with people. So we're starting to, as a communications team, at least, look at how, whether that group persists going forward without the grant and losing, you know, Sue McCormick's experience. You know, past that point is sort of what that looks like. That's very, very early discussions now, but I do think that it's worth starting to have since we've only got the one year left. And now Liz, I'm not sure if she had mentioned this, it came up in the meeting, but I think she said she was going to email you, Martha, about it. But we'd also talked about, from a communications standpoint, and I'd mentioned this briefly to you, Beth, as well, when we were at the state board meeting last week. Wondering about the board getting more, I guess the best comparison I have for it was in the Prudential Committee, we would get principal reports. You know, so we, you know, we've done a lot of work at this upper-level district-wide stuff, looking at big issues like transportation. But I think at the, as a board, we very rarely are, you know, we're very rarely treated to the smaller glimpses of what's going on in the individual schools. And you, we used to, or at least Liz and I were both used to seeing this in the old districts as, you know, this is what, a very brief blurb about, you know, this is what's going on in our school on any given month. And we're wondering if we could have something like that. It didn't need to take up a lot of time, but maybe it could be included in like our board packets. Something about, you know, what's going on at each individual school every month or every two months, just sort of a a way for the board to know what's going on at the, you know, sort of ground level in the schools themselves. Because I think we missed, Liz and I mentioned missing that feedback, and all of us who have had previous board experience, I'm not sure if you feel the same way or not, but we think it would be useful.
So Beth and I have skirted around the edges of this conversation, but we will definitely talk about it at an agenda meeting soon. Brendan?
Yeah, Patrick, I'm just curious, not having ever been a board member in a district where that, I don't remember that level of detail being shared on a regular basis, can you talk about the kinds of information that you would get?
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to think. So at the Prudential Committee, when we had it, usually, you know, we would get, it would be, like I said, I think it was probably monthly, maybe every other month. And it would be roughly one page that principals would write up that would detail, you know, big events that were going on in their schools. And it would have a section of things that they would want the board to know. So it was just, you know, and I know that we have those communications, and I'm not saying that they're not in place, but sometimes having those in the voices of the principals was always nice to know. It was nice to know if there was a big event at Fleming going on that they would like a board member to participate in, or someone to come by. It was just a chance for communication to be more of a two-way street. You know, I like knowing that there's a Fine Arts Night going on at ADL, for example. You know, if I happen to have that night free, then I'll go by, and it's a good way to, you know, just sort of see what's going on in the schools, in a more relaxed, sort of informal setting.
So was it more, more events-related, or was it more at the issue level?
It was some events-related. It was very rarely issue-related. They would touch base, like, you know, if there was testing going on, they would say, you know, we're busy, you know, starting to prepare for SPACs that are coming up, that sort of thing. So it was a pretty diverse forum. You know, I wouldn't say there was any one issue that they were like, you know, stuck to saying, you know, every month we want to progress a board. That's not really what it was.
Right.
It was more just a way for us to get feedback from, you know, the building level, just knowing what's going on, you know.
So I would say Brendan, Westford, a piece of the principal's report every month was what was going on in relationship to the school action plan, what staff development was happening, what had, you know, was it a, were we gonna be updated on local assessments? When could we expect that? It was celebrations, you know, positive things that had happened for students or teachers, as what was the events kind of thing. So I think there are many different ways to do it. I think if we are to move forward, I think it would be helpful to principals if we had some kind of standard expectation. So I think the first thing to do is for Kim and Beth and I to have a conversation, bring something back to the board to see if it's something that you think you want and is what you would like. Then we can move forward from there.
Well, one of the other things that happened for a principal report, either Prudential Committee or U forty-six, was that if, if it was actually having a board meeting in that school, particular school, the Prudential Committee moved around. U forty-six did not, because it was, this was our district. You know, but the principals would come, if it was U forty-six, we'd come here and make a short conversation about all the topics that we've just talked about. Upcoming events and that sort of thing. The Prudential Committee, which I attended, would go around and actually visit each school. Okay, and have the meeting there. They would get a presentation, either by sometimes the students when it was at three o'clock, sort of a thing, or, or they'd have a, the principal would act as host and, and that sort of thing, and you'd have that. So it wouldn't necessarily be a building principal for all six buildings or whatever at the time. It might be just that month would be that particular principal where they were meeting. So that it was, you know, not an onerous job for the principal.
So that's something we can talk about, I think. The three o'clock meeting is convenient for faculty. It's often not convenient for board members, so that can be challenging, Keely.
My question was that some of this information sounds like it's not easy to find elsewhere, like what you're referencing in Westford. But others sounds like it's probably already being publicized by the school staff on an events calendar that we could potentially scrape into a board information email without taking more time from the principals personally. So if there's a way that we could focus, if we are gonna ask for something from the principals, focus on things that they don't already have their staff telling us in some other venue, and just find some way to automate sending us the information from the events calendars that board members would be welcome at or something.
And I have to say, I personally am finding the app that Essex Westford District has, and the Facebook posts to be wonderful in terms of helping me understand specific things that are happening in the school. So I think it's helpful if we all get used to doing that and looking at the events calendars. And so I think you're absolutely right, Keely, given that that kind of information is accessible. What we as principals to do should be focused on things that we wouldn't otherwise know.
When we had talked about this in one of our planning meetings, we talked about the notion of a framing question, or a couple of framing questions, similar to what Brendan had suggested, so that we would be capturing the same information from them. In Essex, when we first started, Brendan, we used to get principals' reports in the very beginning before we did policy governance, and I remember I was a parent at the time, and it was often like a parent newsletter in terms of the content. And it varied from building to building. One administrator at the time was very detail-oriented, so we'd get a lot of data. And others, it was what I was getting in my parent newsletter. And so I think to the extent we can capture events without having to have, take anybody else's time, I appreciate the interest in finding ourselves places that we can just attend because we wanna, we have the time and we can get there. But I love the idea. I know, that's right. Don't wanna have to warn it. But I definitely think that it would make sense for us to know what those questions are, because then we would have trimester updates that our principals would all attend, and they'd be reporting out trimesterly student progress. And it'd be sort of data from their local assessments and their plans, and their data walls would be shared. So that's how we did that in Essex Town, and those came to us through the principals, along with the special ed director and the curriculum coordinator. And Mark would be there. So it was a team that shared with us student progress every trimester. But we were targeting certain outcomes, and we've not, you know, we're not there just yet, so.
The Essex Westford app too. I was, I've been asking for the calendar to be updated with events that happen through, and they're, they're trying to get that, so the app would actually, you could click on the calendar and it would have events for that day. But it's not there yet, but that's my hope. But they have top stories.
Get in there. We have an app, which is so cool. In the spirit of gratitude.
Yeah, is it, yeah, and I want it on the app too, but does it have all the events from all the schools? See, that's what I.
I mean, you know, so for example, I know now that on December fourteenth, there's an ADL holiday concert.
Yeah.
And an EMS band concert.
Yeah.
I feel like somewhere I chose like which schools I was interested in hearing updates about.
Do you have the app? Because you could do that in the app. Do you have the app? Cause you could do that in the app.
Cause I know I'm not attending events for town school.
So.
You'll cover those.
Yeah, I, I, I do apologize because I didn't intend for this to like blossom out into a discussion on the referendum itself. Yeah. I was, I was just, it, it came up in the meeting, so I, and I wasn't sure if Liz had communicated or not yet, so.
Yeah, we have talked a little bit.
Okay.
Anything else that?
Um, no, I mean, the only last thing is that Ben is, uh, using up some of his Front Porch Forum posts to post the agendas for our two meetings per month. Cause I think that Liz had mentioned, she got some feedback from the community saying that it was very useful for them to see that. You know, that active communication is, you know, obviously we put that agenda up on the website, but so very few people go and look for it. So when it comes into their inbox at five o'clock every day, it's a different story. And he'll do that as long as he doesn't run across issues with Front Porch Forum. He's allowed four community blasts to all ten Front Porch Forums per month. And if that uses up two of them, he's worried that it might, you know, get to a point where they're gonna yell at him about it.
Is there a reason why we aren't ever on Darby Mayville's magical list?
Haven't we been talking about that for like a year?
Oh, well, we, we could always talk to Darby Mayville and make sure that it gets there.
Do you know Darby Mayville?
Yes, I do name Darby Mayville. Should I email her tomorrow and say please?
She's not a mythical preacher.
Sure. No, she's not a mythical preacher. She took over the community calendar that I and some others were doing, so that's why I know a lot about that.
Cause I get a lot of details about the Select Board and the Planning Commission.
I, I, I will.
It would be nice if, yeah.
I will talk to Darby.
Thank you.
Pat, do you wanna talk about, um, Liz sent to this email tonight? Um, about the presentation that, um, Liz and Sue and Beth had been asked to.
I actually know very little about that, so I will.
Well, I only know what's written.
I, the, honestly, the email that I got this afternoon was the first time I had heard about it. So I would defer to Beth to fill us in about that.
I'll do it. I'll just see what she says.
I can't remember. I said, yeah.
After receiving review proposals from a hundred and thirty schools um, and educational organizations across the country, our proposal titled Engagement and Alignment During the Time of Change, Lessons and Tools for Inclusive Community Engagement has been selected as one of the seventy-five minute concurrent sessions at the two thousand eighteen NESSC. Uh, School of Heat Sign and Action Conference. Set in March in Providence, Rhode Island. Um, and, um, so a group of people including Sue McCormickless and Beth and, um, someone from, oh, a student will be present. So it's exciting. I wish Liz were here, cause she can do it much more justice than I just did. But anyway, you know.
I'm sure they'll talk about it when they present their information for courses.
Voices, okay. Anything else under Communications?
That's everything I have.
Okay, Policy.
So we haven't met yet. I can't point to that. We haven't met yet. We were trying to meet. Um, and we will try again after Thanksgiving to get together. So, um, Paul and I have been working out a plan on what are the necessary policies left that we feel we need. And been working with the leadership team on those. Um, and we'll bring them to the Policy Committee and then we'll work on the procedures. So many of the policies that were into place, we're looking at turn, turn to procedures for our guidance. So anyways, that's the work that, and that's a plan that we'll share with the Policy Committee and hopefully be fine today. I'll meet.
Well, in, 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 given our, our conversation, um, I went and I tried, attempted to look at the old policies from CCSU in Essex Town. And I'm not able to link to where those were, okay? So there, there was a basically dropped into the ether for me. Um, so even if I, there were things in anticipation of our meeting, uh, it would be nice to be able to get back into those to at least review some of the ones that.
That's a really difficult piece. That's part of the piece in my reflection that I talked about.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Are we able to access information?
Yeah, I, I know.
That's it.
Okay.
I think you're gonna have to read.
You're vyingish to me.
Okay. Anything else under Task Team Updates? All right, so under State and Local Updates, there are two major things I didn't wanna talk about. And then if anyone has other things, they can bring them up. Um, the first I would like to just do briefly in that is that the State Board met in Essex High School last week um, because they were honoring the Teacher of the Year as part of their agenda. Several of us attended some parts of that meeting. Um, they did in the beginning ask us how things were going here with our merger and were seemed very interested in our responses. Um, I found the meeting fascinating. I think the board seems pretty high functioning and I always enjoy listening to Rebecca. Um, I unfortunately had another meeting scheduled and I missed the student panel. Some of you weren't there.
That student panel as well.
Killy.
I was at the student panel. I planned to be there for a different thing, but they switched to the agendas. I, I thought it was, um, very instructive to hear students saying, especially about stuff like personal learning plans and see where there's areas where, um, hopefully our district can continue to do things well and areas where hopefully we can give students even more support to get a big picture understanding of their education and the ability to speak about it. Um, I had some more detailed feedback, but someday I might write an email to you guys.
Good. Patrick.
Um, yeah, I mean, the, so the student panel, I don't know, I guess some background. Um, I think it was specifically around taking advantage of the college credit offerings that are available. For the dual enrollment, excuse me, yep. Um, and the students in our district that did take advantage of it. Um, it was pretty heartening to hear, I think, a lot of them weren't aware of it before, but somewhere along the way, they had a teacher who mentioned it to them, or they had a guidance counselor who mentioned it to them. Like that these were options that they could take. Um, and I like that, obviously, since this was students in our district, that we're able to reach out and that we have people who are getting in touch with these students and making sure that they're aware of the vast opportunities that some of these programs offer. So that was, that was very nice and I think the students were very interesting to listen to. Um, Beth, I really appreciate that you talked to your leadership team, cause I could see you like, yeah, come on, sit down, like, I mean, but, right, but I think that that was important because, you know, I know that you were kinda, you know, forcing your hand a little bit, you know, making them stay past probably where I think the principals were trying to get back to their schools, but knowing.
We were actually going to meet. So that was happening at the same time as one of our Wednesday leadership team meetings. So we decided we would, well, I asked them, would you come and welcome the board with me, um, and be there? And then when they switched the agenda, we couldn't get up and leave.
Right. Yeah, but that was, but that was great, like hearing you say, you know, let's stay, let's stay for the kids, you know, was, was awesome. I like that.
Kim, do you have any reflections?
I missed the student panel part, but I was there for actually the beginning and the end and I found it really, um, interesting. I think they are going to come upon difficult decisions as they are looking at, um, one of the things that was pretty eye-opening is a district came to basically say, we want to be allowed to stay the same, or they were looking to put themselves aligned with somebody um, in a format that didn't necessarily make any sense. Not for kids, not for their taxpayers. At least there was no evidence presented to that effect. And they were going to, they were looking to somehow protect themselves, I believe, from the small schools grant loss and many other things that were not about kids. And, um, the board took the administration's recommendation to not honor the request. Um, and the conversation that ensued around it was clear to let that board chair know, um, you're coming with no data that supports your claim or your interest in remaining the same. Um, there, these are big questions. The, the, um, the agency of Ed has been really intentional, I think, about what they are looking to see as they're considering these alternative structures. And, um, but it was pretty eye-opening to think about what is sort of qualifying as coming to say you wanna either stay the same or align yourself in a way that you're protected from having to do something differently. And the State Board was able to provide honest feedback about the situation, offer challenging questions. And, um, and also reflected among themselves that that was a difficult decision to say no, even though the information wasn't there. And I think wisely, somebody, I think, alluded to the fact that this is just the beginning of this. We are getting to a place where the state is going to be assigning and designing, um, the remaining systems to not orphan any district and to align in a way that makes sense. Um, it's just unsustainable. And it, that particular district actually has the highest per pupil spending in the state and they do not operate a school. And it was absolutely remarkable. So it was one of those things as we sat together, Diane and I. Um, it is just, it's a little bit maddening because we're all paying for that. Um, and they are protecting, protected with their taxpayers. And the rest of us are bearing the cost. And it's, that's not good for kids. It's not good for equity. It's not good for excellence and it is not good for efficiency. So the State Board of Ed has resolved, those are their three goals. And those, that is the lens through which they were very disciplined about every decision at that table, every conversation they had. It was heartening. I was appreciative of that work.
So the, the piece that Kim is referring to is they went to the legislature and got, um, a law passed that says if you're a tuition district, you're not subject to the excess spending penalty. Um, and they were trying to not have to, um, go into another, into a new district with some other districts that only tuition as well, which could have the potential to bring the education spending per pupil down because it would be spread across a broader group of students. So, um, it was quite, quite eye-opening. I was really pleased that the State Board really challenged this person. Uh, the pieces of, the fact that its report didn't address what it needed to address. And what they were asking for didn't meet the goals of Act forty-six and forty-nine. So, all right, I think we need to move on because I do wanna spend a little time on the letter from the governor. Um, we don't have the, we don't have Brian here tonight. He's in Europe visiting his sons, which is great. Um, so there are pieces that we will, may have to wait until we have him at the table. But I'd like to at least start the discussion tonight with what were your reactions to the letter? Um, and over the budget process, I'm sure the ideas that works, Preston, the letter will come up, um, from time to time. So, so what, what was your reaction, Andre?
My reaction was arbitrarily suggests that the taxes are gonna go up. Like, that's the letter we're referring to, cause I caught that piece, is without taking a look at the budgets or, or whatnot. Um, I think it's premature to send something like that out. And I know that there is, um, a greater issue is what's being proposed in Washington that's gonna have a greater impact on the state is. So I, I think we're an interesting, uh, I guess, perfect storm possible?
So, uh, the, the part of, part of that, what we're hearing about this eight cent increase um, is based on what frankly, the VSPA kept pointing out at the end of the session last year. Um, the legislature and the governor relied a lot of, a lot of one-time money.
One-time expenditures.
To give us the tax rates that we had for last year. So what the governor is saying is if spending increases at the rate that it has been, um, and we have to make up for all this one-time money that is going to be available. At the starting gate, we could be looking at eight cent increases in taxes. So what can districts do to try to help with the spending that they control? It certainly isn't gonna help the whole eight cents, not even close. But, um, you know, that, that was my take on what he was saying.
I don't know, after, after going to the State Board of Ed meeting, it was, it was interesting to see the constant reference of six, three, one. You know, after the presentation from, I forget who the gentleman was.
So it's the governor's.
Governors, yes.
Chief of staff.
Yes, Chief of Staff. Um, you know, he did this, this wonderful presentation and then I read the governor's letter. And it's like, I had a better idea where that was coming from. It was nice that instead of, um, doing what he did last budget season, okay? At least this time, at least he was being kind enough to warn us before he slapped us. Um, but, um, I, I'm editorializing, okay? So, um, and that's, that's kinda how my point was, is like, well, that's awfully nice and by the way, it's coming. You know, and, and it just, just duck now, cause it's, it's coming. And I'm like, wait a minute, guy, you know, you're not being helpful, okay? Cause it's, it's, he still doesn't understand what the job is of superintendents and board members yet. I, it, you know, it's, I, I feel his pain and I don't wanna feel his pain. But, but I feel we all are going to because we haven't, as a state, come to a resolution as to how this is gonna work. Um, asking for suggestions are awfully helpful. Maybe there is somebody out there who's got a great idea. Um, but at this point in time, it's, we unfortunately are still by law in the tried and true era of what we have to do. So, um, you know, level, it's not level program he's asking for, he's asking for level funding. So, okay, um, and he's gonna leave some wiggle burn for those who are increasing in students. Well, I'm, I'll give him kudos on that one. That's awfully nice. Um, but after that, um, tell me something helpful to, to, to accomplish his mission, cause he's, he's not really giving me much more than that.
Other reactions? Kim?
I was just gonna say it was, um, we actually received it from the VSPA while we were sitting in the State Board of Ed meeting. And the State Board had not received it. So I thought that was pretty interesting. Um, they, of course, were in the meeting and not getting it. I don't know how quickly V S B A turned it around, or exactly like when the letter came out from the governor's office. Um, I'm suspecting Rebecca knew of the letter, um, but nobody else at that table did. Um, that was somewhat interesting to me. Um, I hope that, I hope that the education summit can produce some productive conversation. That um, can actually be acted upon. I hope the right, I don't know who the right people are, but the partners that are gonna need to come together to do cost containment. I think healthcare last year was an example of where there was an opportunity. And that um, evaporated for lack of collaboration um, from all parties. So um, or a lack of political wealth. Because there was, there, there were cost savings to have been had and we couldn't um, do that. So I'm a little bit suspect, I'm encouraged that they're trying to get some people together to have the conversation. Um, I guess we'll see.
Kim?
Um, to follow on what you're saying, it's like, I think with Act forty six and the RED study. Like, we're all committed to doing things that might be uncomfortable in order to create something that works better and saves money in the future. And like, you can't always have a win-win situation, but you're much more likely if you like, have correct information in the hands of competent people. Who are trying to do the right thing, than if you have like, a mixture of incompetence and decisions that are influenced by politics in weird ways. Which like, I would say that like, not counting contracted employees in staff ratios would be incompetence. And like, deciding to make random exemptions for things that sound like school choice. Because that's like, positive with your party nationally would be not entirely being politically committed to doing things that work for Vermont. To save money and educate students better, like. So it would be nice to believe that what we're just trying to do is fix this six, three, one problem. But it's hard to have that confidence after last year's thing with healthcare. And like, of course, our costs are going up faster than the healthcare. It's mostly a staffing organization, so we have to bear the full brunt of healthcare increases. Plus, we have like, an increasing percentage of the population is in schooling with dual enrollment and pre-K. And they're increasingly hard to educate with an increase in special needs diagnosis, opiate exposure, et cetera. So the school system is providing a higher percentage of the total services being provided by the state as a whole. That's not necessarily the problem that it costs more.
And I think um, to that, I hope that their office is realizing that to include in this education summit. Um, health and human services employees, because that collaboration, it, it may be that schools are the delivery venue. Because it's the safest place for families. But to have the services continue to be shifted to the education system with all costs being borne by the education system. Um, is, is not accurately reflecting the costs of education, if you will. We're, we're doing so much more. And I think that idea of working together across those agencies has been thrown around for years now. And I've yet to see anything happen that looks or smells like it's happening in earnest. So I hope, to your point, Kylie, that it's an education summit that better include not just folks in education. And I'm sure they're listening to me about their guest list. Um, but that, I think, is, will, will of course be important. And I, I think about the timing of it, and mid-December is not a lot of time for actionable items to come out of that to impact, you know, any budget. And so it makes you want to believe it's a sincere effort. And it puts a little bit of the cynic in me, um, really desperately hoping it's not just to look like we're doing something.
Or being incompetent.
So, uh, yeah, so I had a few reactions, um, some of you have expressed them. Um, it was nice to have something come to us before the session started. At the same time, it's still pretty late to really make a plan. Um, to ask us to level fund, um, if we have declining enrollment, which I don't think we will. But we won't know those numbers until mid-December. I assume he's talking about equalized pupils. Um, but even two and a half percent, I don't know. Healthcare costs are going up ten percent. We've certainly talked about um, using attrition as a way to take a good look at if somebody's leaving. Especially at the administrative level, but at the teaching level too, or support staff. You know, is it a position that needs to be filled? Or can the duties be done in another way? So I think that's something we were, we're already doing. Um, a number of his cost containment ideas, um, like offering an incentive for people to retire. Uh, that's not gonna work for FY nineteen, it can't be in place in time. So I, I, I feel that frustration of, um, yeah, there might be some good ideas out there. But most of them are gonna have to go through a legislative process. So they're not gonna be of any help to us, so.
And on that one in particular, I know the state treasurer would have concerns um, with early retirement incentives. And the impact on the, the retirement systems. And my other hat heard that.
Yeah.
So, um, the likelihood of that finding.
Back into the discussion of having the ed fund paid for retirement, let's hope not. Um, okay, so I, I think probably next month we'll be talking about budget instructions with Brian. Um, but at this point, rather than personally, I would not be interested in an artificial target of level of funding. Without understanding what that means. So I would expect us to talk about some principles like, you know, making some progress on equity. Becoming as efficient with our staffing as we can. And I, I'm not gonna think of all of them tonight, but I think that's what our early discussions need to be. Brendan?
So I just read the letter tonight, um, and somehow I missed it. I guess my, my initial reaction is that I'm sort of disappointed that it seems like we are gearing up for another year. Where education becomes a s- like a serious political football. Um, and one of the things that uh, bums me out is that, you know, the whole RED study. And the work that we have done to bring our two districts together, um, this is year one. Like, it, it just started a few months ago.
Right.
And.
Hundred days ago.
Yeah, a hundred days ago. And, and you know, part of our rationale, part of the rationale, rationale that we talked about as a RED study committee was the fact that, you know, as the districts came together. Over a three to five-year period, you would begin to realize the benefits of efficiency and the, the power of coming together. And then to have this sort of like, almost feels like an outside force jammed in to this um, our grand plan. Um, feels pretty defeating. Um, and to automatically walk into this year thinking there's gonna be an eight cent, you know, like, like, we still have, we're still supposed to realize. The benefits of year two of a property tax relief. Um, so like, is that all gonna just wash out, you know? So I guess, you know, I don't really have anything, like, obviously substantial to say other than, other than I just feel, um, I feel a sense of like, disappointment. That um, I feel like these outside forces are now going to begin to have more of an impact on how we behave. Than our grand plan of, of trying to realize the benefits of a unified district. So that, so that, yeah, as a board member, I'm not sure what, what I can do to sort of preserve that spirit in the face of significant challenge. I mean, significant challenges that we're facing as a state.
Hunter?
An additional comment um, that I'd like to make, um, is one or two years ago, um, there was some cost shifting as to who was gonna be responsible for the education. Of those that are in, in, in concert, in.
In concert.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
And it was shifted to the, to the ed funding being responsible for that. So on one side, instead of being under um, the department of corrections, uh, it shifted to being a function of the ed. Which I understand to some degree, but it's also lowering someone's budget and increasing someone else's budget. And I do side with Brendan very heavily is that we're in, embarking on year two of this consolidation. And now it seems that we're gonna lose what we're trying to attain in what was also said would be benefits from consolidating. So this may have more effects that distrust, that consolidation may be the direction to go. If you're gonna continuously see taxes rise.
Well, the only consolation in that regard is we get an eight cent benefit, eight cent benefit to share. Which may be completely offset.
Right.
But a district that didn't consolidate is gonna definitely have the whole increase.
But there's another concern that's on the radar as well, is that the state income tax is tied to the federal income tax.
Yeah.
And what that result is, is that the state is experiencing a loss in revenues.
Maybe, depending on what happens with state and local tax deductions. Kim?
Thank you.
I guess the only thing I would, to me, it feels more like a ten cent increase, although we were getting that eight cents last year, we got ten cents.
Right.
This year, um, we're gonna take on that eight cents. And we're gonna basically have the additional two cents that we didn't have last time. So it feels like we're coming out of the box with a ten cent increase um, that is um, feeling insurmountable. I, I will say, one of the things I hope this doesn't result in is a rush to those who don't wanna do anything different with the unification. To say, well, show us the savings from unification across the state. Because that is on Digger constantly, that is on the comments from the folks trying to plead their case in front of the state board of ed every time you turn around. And I think we recognize as many going through unification, that it is a patient process. And it needs to be very intentional if it's going to ever achieve equity and excellence and efficiency. Um, and it has to be pretty methodical. And so I would encourage that while we will certainly take all of this under advisement, I hope that we will not take it in lieu of our bigger plans. We may have to prioritize our plans, but I, I think that we have the opportunity. And I, I don't suspect we're gonna see a huge declining enrollment, as many communities will. We, I'm hopeful we would be level and then we're looking at, you know, the two and a half, which is not nothing. Um, it, I just think this is good information and it shouldn't be our only driver in the work that we'll do together. Because we have a responsibility to what we promise the people of our communities, so.
Yep. Any other comments? Okay, so I think we're at our, well, any other state and local updates?
The audit timeline.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Right now, so I will have, we'll have a better idea of the timeline and the timeline and the rollout of those on December fifth.
Is this the final audit of all of the dis-?
Correct.
The legacy.
The legacy, yes.
Yes.
Well, that's up to be done for the town right now, that's being done.
So each of the legacy boards will have to meet to accept those audits. And that should be the end of those boards.
Next year, it'll be one audit.
That's right, there's all that savings right away.
This year is in January, right? Was it, did we?
They typically are later, but I think because, so what, I think our local boards were, or at least our, I think E T S D was supposed to have been done at the end of this year. Like, wrapping up our work, I think C C S U was going with January.
January first, right?
Uh, my understanding was that all of the local boards, except for C C S U.
Oh.
Their audits at a certain time, and C C S U existed for one more month beyond that.
That's what I remember too.
You're right, Kylie, yeah. But Brian told us, um, you know, it's, it'll be based on what's needed in terms of the audits. Okay, um, Kim, I forgot, under task teams, do you wanna just give us a quick update on support staff negotiation?
Absolutely, we um, had been at INPAS and technically, I guess, are there, although we've had um, an agreement that, for a side letter. Which I think we all knew at the last time on healthcare. And um, in, administration and a couple of their folks have made some progress on other issues. But we um, remain at INPAS on a couple of outstanding matters. So we're working to get um, a mediator and we thought we had a date and um, the um, boulangerie from the N E A was not available. So we're, we're working towards a date to really bring it in for a landing. So I, I think the work remains collegial and the um, two contracts were even more disparate in support staff than they were in teachers. And we began the support staff process probably four months or so after we began the teacher process. Intentionally, because often some of the articles that are similar are able to be just taken um, in the support staff contract when they've already been worked through in the teacher contract. So um, I, we're hopeful for a positive outcome. Um, the date that we had been looking at was the end of November and that was not available, so I've not heard of another date yet.
Is, um, is it your belief that we'll be able to wrap it up in time for those numbers to figure into our budget planning for?
I would suspect so, yes. Yes.
So stay tuned.
That's right.
Okay, so who, um, anybody have items for the agenda in December?
Sounds like you have planned.
For like, the second meeting in December, we'll, we'll take suggestions.
If you, if you have something that can wait to, at least the nineteenth, that would be great.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so takeaways from this meeting?
Hundred days.
Hundred days.
Presentation and written report, I think we're both.
But no cheerios.
Oh, no cheerios, oh, I was gonna do something with that.
Really liked the pictures, that was good. And we got the Thanksgiving table, so it was sort of a celebration, a holiday.
I think the fact that the superintendent evaluation will be conducted.
Yeah.
And that we had a, formed a subcommittee for, to explore um, student involvement in the board.
Yeah.
Uh, community for, um, uh, committee for the student rep?
Yeah, that's what.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Seems like, got it.
Can you also just put the reminder about the meeting on the tw- twenty eighth?
Yes.
Um, for the Voices report out to the community.
Right, that's.
Thank you.
I assume that we're gonna. I assume that we're going to, I assume that schools are helping to publicize that event?
Yes, and it's up in, in the community a lot, seeing the posters. And schools are, we are on our website and tweeting it. Ben's got that covered.
Right, sure.
But yes, schools do.
Okay. Are we done? We are adjourned, and I hope you all have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Same to you. Same to you. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yes, enjoy, eat well.
Co-seek.
Thank you.
Thank you. Something other than the selfie shots.
No, thank you.
It was a, that diner, is it?
Miss Littman Diner?
Yeah. I've been there a few times. I know that place.
So are we the only people that evaluate the superintendent?